Okay. All right, I have six o'clock. Let's call the work session to order the facilities rental policy. Ms. Sands-Eiden.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you remember, at our last regular meeting on July 1st, the City Council reviewed this item. And so tonight, we are going to take a look at the group fees again, in addition to the updated policy, and then there'll be an opportunity for any additional questions. What we're going to start with has to do with the groups and the fees. And taking a look at what the City Council's philosophy was at the last meeting, it seemed to center around supporting the nonprofit groups. Therefore, staff is bringing back to you what I'm going to call a modified version of the groups and the fees, again, for your comments and your direction this evening. What I'd like to do is just run through the four different groups. I've made a couple of modifications here. I will identify what those are, and then we can come back and talk specifically about your feedback, but I want you to have a good understanding of all four of the groups and the fees before we get into that. So for Group 1, for the criteria and the fees, we've identified this. We've taken out the nonprofit because we felt that that term really describes a lot of different organizations, and we're really trying to differentiate between some of the groups that are truly nonprofit, but they have a different purpose. So we have changed or modified Group 1 to be organizations that exclusively provide charitable or educational services in the city of Carver. And I would emphasize that's the charitable piece of it that we are focusing on there. And then some examples would be the Carver Lions, Carver-on-the-Minnesota, Funky Minds, and we are proposing a no-charge fee for that one, similar to what we currently have. Again, I'm going to go through all the groups, and we'll come back. Group 2, we're categorizing this as tax-exempt organizations that operate in the city of Carver, and we've listed some examples there on the right-hand side. Alcoholics Anonymous, the athletic associations, Chamber of Commerce, churches, homeowners' associations, Red Cross, and Scouts. And what was discussed at the last meeting for Group 2, which is still proposed here, one free rental per month, and then the additional rentals would be per the Group 3 fees. Group 3, we've identified as the government agencies and business owners that operate in the city of Carver, or individuals or property owners in the city of Carver. And some examples that we've listed include District 112 in Carver County. And the fees at the bottom of the slide there are what was discussed at the last meeting. And then Group 4, we've identified as individuals or business owners not located in the city of Carver. And again, the fees that are listed there are those that were discussed at the July 1 meeting. So with that being said, this is just a recap here of what the groups look like. And then we can go back, and I'd just like to discuss each one and get your thoughts on that. So again, looking at Group 1, changing that to organizations, again, exclusively providing charitable or educational services, and what your thoughts and feedback are on that.
So my only thought with that, Vicki, is I think the term "educational" in there could make it confusing for folks like from the school district. So I wonder if we shouldn't strike that word.
I know as staff, we went back and forth on that one as well, but we thought by listing the examples that would help that, but if you wanted to remove that, we were just looking at some of the organizations in that their purpose and function did center around educational activities. So we were trying to clarify by listing the examples.
And to cover that Funky Minds category.
I agree with you, though. Educational could be mistaken when you're looking at the school and the school district. So I'm happy to see that the examples that we have, the Carver Lions, Carver-on-the-Minnesota, Funky Minds, I think they're all perfect groups for this section. I don't know what the right wording is for that. Charitable, yes, is a good one, and then I don't know what the next descriptor should be.
And I guess we thought by listing the examples that that would help staff as we manage the administration of this, that that would help clarify what those groups are. And by listing the District 112 in Group 3, we thought that that would clarify that they're in Group 3 and not in a charitable organization, but...
I hear you, and I'm comfortable with keeping it in if you'd like. I just feel like it's, could potentially, removing it could potentially save you an argument with somebody from the school district. I don't know. It's just, I don't know that I'm gonna...
We could take a look and see if there's a different, I guess, way that we could indicate that, but I know it just says, staff, we went back and forth, and we thought by indicating the examples that that really was our method to clarify that. So when District 112 was listed under Group 3, that's where they would fall and not under Group 1.
Yeah. I don't know if I'm in love with it, but we have talked a little bit about civic organizations and kind of being all-encompassing in this group. I wonder if that isn't the word? Organizations that exclusively provide charitable or civic services in the city of Carver? Because that would cover, and that would be differentiated from Group 2, with that word.
Can you flip to Group 2?
We were trying to differentiate between groups.
On the screen, can you flip to Group 2 for just a second?
Yeah.
I guess when I'm looking at the Group 2, none of them say civic to me.
Or operate. The Lions operate here.
So to me, maybe civic is a good word to have in Group 1. Charitable and civic, because when I look at Group 2, most of those don't scream civic at me.
So are you proposing for Group 1, we would say charitable or civic organizations? Is that what I'm understanding you to say?
That operate in the city of Carver.
Yeah. Could you go back to Group 1 now for me, please? Flip screen. Thank you.
Right, and we have listed there that they are in the city of Carver. We can add the word.
They don't have that operate.
We can add that word, okay?
Because Funky Minds and Carver-on-the-Minnesota and Lions, Carver Lions, all operate, yeah.
But the churches also operate within the city of Carver?
And this is, I think, again, where we're getting hung up a little bit on the criteria, and I know even as staff, we did the same thing. We were using different words and wordsmithing and sort of going in circles, and that's why we really thought to clarify, we really used the examples.
It's the reason we want, because Funky Minds is a nonprofit, right? So they technically could fit the definition of Group 2. Do they have multiple per-month meetings?
They do after school, I think every Wednesday they do after school.
I just am unfamiliar, so, okay.
They meet multiple times.
Okay, so they need to meet multiple times a month, okay.
Yes, and we were looking at putting them in this group because we were looking at the charitable contribution piece of that.
Yeah. And I'm not as much concerned about the groups that we have wanting to upgrade, if you will, the Group 1 groups wanting to be considered as Group 2 and wanting to pay for multiple meetings a month? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
It's more the reverse of that, the school district thinking that they would qualify in Group 1.
Right, right.
So are you comfortable with Group 1? We'll just change a little bit of the wording with the charitable or civic, and we'll leave the examples there to clarify exactly what we're referring to?
I like that.
Yeah, I do like having the examples in there.
And again, that was based on your philosophy, really wanting to support the...
I think we're all in agreement with that.
And taking out, trying to understand what the differences are in the nonprofits. And then Group 2, we would leave as presented there.
Yep.
Whoops. And then the fees were as what you had proposed last time. Group 3 is where we added District 112 in Carver County. We moved them into Group 3. And the fees, as you discussed at the last meeting.
I have a, okay.
You go, I'll go.
I have a question. I'm sorry, if we go back to Group 2. So we're looking at athletic organizations. So I'm just going to use the CCYBSA as an example. So they are our youth baseball and softball in Carver. And it says one free rental per month. So let's say they don't meet December through March, but they have planning meetings that are, let's say they need to have two a month before the season starts. We're going to require them by this to pay for that second one a month?
Right, and I would say that's what they are actually doing now. That they are, and for example, they could use this space that we're in this evening for that meeting. It would cost them $10 per hour if they were to have that meeting, over and above their free rental for that, maybe that one month or that second month that they would have an additional meeting.
Okay, go back to Group 2 for me, would you?
Group 2?
And then they would go to the groups...
They would fall in, after that free month, and they fall into Group 3. So they could use the Broadway Conference Room if they had a smaller meeting. That would be $5 an hour, or they could use this facility for $10 an hour.
And so that's currently what they have been doing? If they have more than one meeting a month, they pay?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
I think you could fit Funky Minds as charitable.
Are there any other questions on the groups 1 through 4 and the fees?
Just sure we go even in that, in that word.
I'm talking about the CCYBSA.
I know, but I'm kind of going back because I'm looking at the Funky Minds website and going, I need a word from your webpage on what you are to try to help us with that description, and I...
You've made peace with it?
I've made peace with it, yes. Okay.
Just charitable?
Charitable, yes. Okay, so I did get feedback from one resident that seemed like the city rates for residents seemed a little bit high.
Thank you.
In general, was her feedback. I, Vicki, I'm going back to last meeting's packet. And it looks like by comparison, it's not too much more considering, and I guess really, I think for comparison purposes, I'm comparing Village Hall, which has a kitchen and is a huge asset, versus, and I know we talked about this at our last meeting, but even versus like the Chaska Event Center that does not have a kitchen that you can get behind the griddle and flip some pancakes at. That that's an additional cost. But I just wanted to float that in front of the group and see what y'all thought.
Yeah, I wanted to talk about that fee a little bit. So I hear what you're saying about we're having another offering of having the kitchen where some of these other places don't. Do the other places, though, you have, they clean up for you? So they would, if you were at the Chaska Event Center, you don't get the vacuum or the broom and sweep up after yourself? I believe at, at the new Village Hall, they would still be required to do their own cleanup afterwards?
That is correct. And the facilities or the other cities that I checked with, it's basically, you know, there are a bunch of different ways that they manage it. Some actually hire a company to do it, and then the rental party pays for that. Some, you can clean up yourself, some the city does and charge it back. So it's, again, it gets back to what do, you know, what do you as a city council want to?
I'm fine with people coming in and then, you know, cleaning up, sweeping up and all that, and then if they don't do it or something's broken, that's why they have a deposit. But when we're requiring people to clean up after themselves and we're not providing that type of service for them, I think that our fees per hour are a little bit high when it comes to the new Village Hall. You know, if you're thinking about, I'm going to have my son's birthday party or my grandma's 85th party for whatever, you're, I mean, if we have a, do we have the minimum of two hours also in this plan?
Yes.
So then you're looking at, what, $170 to bring in some cake for grandma? I, that's just how I think of it, is when you're looking at these smaller groups that are coming in, that $85 an hour with a minimum of two hours.
Have you tried to rent a room anywhere in the county the last few years?
Right, and when you consider the size of the facility, it's not so much the size of the party, you're looking at the size of the facility, which can accommodate the 166 people, and it has the commercial kitchen. So I think that's what you're looking at versus if you say we have a smaller party of, you know, 10 or 20 people, maybe this isn't the best space for that particular event.
But it might be the only space that works for that event. So, and we don't have, we don't have a lot of different spaces to choose from.
Well, and they can use the Church by the River, but then again, we're going to talk about later that alcohol is not allowed here, but if they're not having alcohol, they certainly can have that in this facility.
Okay, thank you, Vicki, but this may not be an ideal place to hold some of those events either. We have church pews, and I don't know what it will look like after we move out of here, if we're going to put just tables back in here, or if this is going to stay.
Right, but the plan is to bring the chairs and tables from Carver Place and have it more conducive to functions like that, and, you know, the city council dais, and this, these tables with the microphones and the pews will be all rearranged, so you'll have a more conducive space to those types of events.
Okay, thanks. And I missed the last meeting where we talked about this, though. I'm sorry if you're all having to listen to the same thing over again.
I just want to make sure you have, I just want to make sure you have all the information.
Okay. I'll sit back for a second and think.
I was just going to say $400 is a bargain for a whole day to rent out that whole space.
I agree with that, for a whole day.
I just wanted to share the feedback. I do tend to agree that it's a fair rate for what we're...
We've looked around to rent spaces for an organization, and you can't touch anything for under $2,000 for like a day and a half, two-day event.
Okay.
So it's, to me, that's fair. It's more than fair.
So we'll be allowing people to bring, so when I go back to, let's say, the smaller party that might want to rent, for the Church by the River, obviously wouldn't have kitchen, but they would be able to bring in food if they wanted to and do that kind of thing here, so that's still...
They just can't have alcohol.
Okay, so then if we, okay, so if we want to use this as a smaller spot, I don't know, alcohol in all the conversations that I've been in about this has become kind of a catalyst to a lot of things, but I'm, so if you're going to have brunch here and you want to have a mimosa, we can't, you can't do that. You'd have to go to the bigger space and rent at the higher price because of alcohol.
Should we just table that for a quick second and get through the four groups?
Sure, yeah, that's fine.
Because we'll come to the alcohol.
And then we can talk booze.
Absolutely, yeah.
So I think we're good on Groups 3. Yeah, I'm good on the pricing. I did finally find the comparison chart that you provided last time, and I'm very good with these rates, yeah. I'm good with these rates, yeah. I mean, Chaska Event Center being $1,000 to $1,500 a day.
Comparison one?
Yeah.
What page are you on?
I'm on page 164 of the July 1. Okay. So, so I think we're, yep, I'm good. We're good with Group 3? Yes.
Okay, good with Group 3?
Yes.
And then Group 4 would be the individuals or businesses not located in the city of Carver.
Yep.
And again, those were what we had discussed at the last meeting. Okay?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay. And I'm going to move on to just a couple of the changes that were made in the facility rental policy based on your feedback from the July 1 meeting. The City Council had decided that the $1 million per occurrence on the general liability was going to be required for events when alcohol is served. So that would be the other piece that would be required when alcohol is involved. This is when you are serving it, not when you are selling it, because selling it has a different requirement that was already in the policy. The other thing that the City Council had decided was that alcoholic beverages were only going to be permitted in the Village Hall in patio area and not in the Broadway Conference Room, and not here at the Church by the River. So that update was also made to the policy in your packet. And then the last piece that was discussed at the July 1 meeting had to do with a building monitor, and the City Council had discussed what was in the policy, where that was going to be required whenever alcohol was being served. And the policy had identified that the reason for that was that individual would have complete authority over the facility, the equipment, the participants, the activities, and then including the authority to request changes in activities or cessation of activities. And the reason for that had to do with, as we discussed, to protect and maintain the new city hall. As was mentioned in the last meeting, this is a facility that is about $5 million. Also, to protect the safety and security of those individuals that are attending those functions, and then to prevent situations from occurring like we've maybe seen some in the past when alcohol is being served. And the policy identifies an hourly rate during alcohol service until the end of the event, and there was a discussion about a $25 an hour charge for that, but certainly that's open for discussion.
Vicki, thanks for forwarding me the policy. So I have a little background on this because having been a city employee, I was the rental coordinator for a while, so I do have some good history and background on how it goes and how it went. Although the facility now is new, it was a similar facility. It had a, it had a kitchen in it, and it had a meeting space. So when I'm looking at the, for the alcohol and for having a building monitor, we'll call it, I know at one point when we had larger parties, it was, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to find it here, it's, I'm talking, if you were to reserve, if you were going to serve alcohol and reserve on the full-day rental basis, it was required that you had a building, we'll just say monitor. At that time, it was a sheriff's officer, that you paid 60 some dollars for whatever the wage was at that time. And then my concern with the alcohol right now is, let's just say, and I'll use my own experience again, I'm with the Carver Lions, we go and we have an hour and a half meeting, even if we're not selling it, if you, you know, bring a cocktail in, or we have something, because we often have our potluck dinners, now we would be required to have a building monitor on. And I think it's a nice idea from what I've heard to say, well, we could train someone to be the building monitor, but also in these groups, you can't, you can't say that someone's always going to be sitting there. We're always going to make the meeting, you know? So if we have two people who are in it, and let's just say, I'm one of them, and I can't be there that night, then what do we do? I have, I just have a hard time with some of these short-term rentals with being what I feel is a little heavy-handed on some of these policies, when I think we need to have a little bit of trust in our, in our citizens and our residents, and I know we have this brand-new building, and it's expensive, but let's remember who paid for the building that's expensive. It was all the residents, so I just want to be cognizant of not being, of being really tight and want to hold that new building so close that we end up either outpricing or outreaching the people who paid to build it.
The other thing that I would add to that, whatever the City Council would decide on that, you need to be, I guess, careful in having the objective criteria, whatever that may be, and it would need to be implemented consistently. You can't say, well, we're not going to have it for this group, but we're going to have it for this group and so forth. That being said, you could also consider, I know the $25 an hour charge was discussed at the last meeting, but you certainly could make it a lesser charge, so you'd still have that safety and security and so forth. You could do something like a $15 an hour charge, and then it would be really up to the city staff to manage that, where we'd have to have somebody available. It wouldn't be up to the groups to train their own monitor and provide their own monitor. That would be something that would be provided by the city.
Right, but if we have someone who has a small bridal shower for brunch, I think to have someone sitting there in the corner for a two-hour rental is, just seems silly. It seems silly to me. I will read what was in the, the policy before. It says, "For those events at which alcohol will be served, the rental coordinator reserves the right to require the user to have law enforcement personnel present at the user's expense during any portions of the event." A was one law enforcement officer will be required for a one-floor full-day rental. Two law enforcement officers will be required if the rental, full-day rental includes the hall and gym, because there was an up and down at that point. So because it can, it gets expensive, I remember back, if we had, I, we had, you know, weddings or quinceañeras and during dinner, but once dinner was over, then it was required to have the sheriff come in because that was the band and things were going longer and, and the alcohol was, you know, being served at that point. So let's, let's talk about it, because this is a tough one for me.
Well, I'd certainly want to see a monitor in there. Yes, everybody in Carver paid for it. That's why we want to make sure that all these policies are implemented consistently throughout everybody. So if somebody from outside Carver wants to rent it, that's fine. They would have to have a monitor. Everybody in Carver should have to have a monitor, too. It's just consistently, consistency is, is what I'm looking for in this. And, yeah, it's $5 million, and I think that anybody that will rent out the building will understand why we're doing it. They're not going to balk at 40 or 60 bucks, whatever, whatever it is to have a monitor there. It's, it's just plain simply for safety and security of the building.
Yeah, you know, I hear what you're saying on a short term, right? Say we, someone rents it for two hours. Is that rental period of two hours serving alcohol less risky than a full-day event of alcohol? I worry about the city being in a position of judging which are more risky or low-risk, right, from a time duration. I don't know that I can make that assumption and say, oh, well, if it's only two hours, they're going to be serving alcohol, there won't be any risk to damage the facility versus if someone's renting it for four hours or for some longer duration. I don't know. I struggle with that a little bit. I hear what you're saying, but I struggle also with trying to determine what that short-term rental that's okay to serve alcohol that doesn't need a building monitor is.
How many hours again is it before it turns into a full day?
Five, yeah.
They can rent five consecutive hours?
We, we did the formula like that. If it's more than that, then it makes sense to have the full day.
Sure, and I understand the formula, but what if we, so five to me is, that's a long period of time before you would hit the full-day rate. I, I can't remember if it's in here or not in this previous one, but I thought it was less hours. What if, I mean, do you go less hours? I mean, I think it should be less hours than five to hit a full-day rate, because at five, I mean, you're almost getting there anyways. I think it was four before, because there are cleanups involved in that.
That's what you missed last week, because we kind of went through, and the numbers were a little bit off, and we decided that the hourly rate should equal some equation of so many hours equals maximum full-day rate. So we came up with, so hourly rate times five hours is the day rate, and you'll see that that's consistent throughout now, so. And that was just based off of some of the numbers that Vicki had in there. As far as the building monitor, I do agree, so initially, I was concerned that it could be a deterrent as well, but I think in some of the things that I've talked to with Brent, in that we can have these groups train their folks, and that they can supply, so the Lions a baby shower, quinceañera, could supply their own building monitor if they had one trained and kind of in our stable of building monitors, if you will, that that would be fine. The, the other thing, you know, that we talked about is, this is somebody who four times an hour does around through the building and doesn't necessarily sit in the corner of the baby shower.
Exactly, they need to be on site, yeah.
They're doing homework, work, Facebook, whatever, upstairs in city hall, watching the cameras if they were, you know, through the duration. They're not trying to sit in the corner and be invisible, you know?
Well, they, is that capability in city hall to sit upstairs and watch cameras?
I may have made that part up.
Sure, no, no, okay, no, I realize we're just, we're examples of things.
I think they do a physical walkthrough a few times an hour, and we figure out what that is, what that number is, but then they're otherwise...
But I think sitting upstairs, like saying, well, you can sit upstairs?
That, too. Maybe they're downstairs in the Broadway Conference Room.
Then to me, that, that negates the point of having a building monitor if they're not physically there, or they can't see it. Like I said, if they had video upstairs, that they could watch it on a monitor and so, but if you're going to say we need to pay a building monitor just to be in the building, but then they're unaware of what's happening, I don't think that's the right solution.
I think as, as a city, we would need to train those individuals. They would be an employee of the city, and we would have to train them what it is we want them to do. We can't just say you're a building monitor and you need to figure that out. We would need to train them. Right, we would need to make sure that they understand that.
Yeah, and I'm also open, open to lowering the rate per hour if that's a little bit more palatable, you know, as from a deterrent standpoint, just to make it more palatable for those who are renting the facility. I'm okay with that. I don't know what the right amount is, 15 is it, or something like that. I would like to try the building. I would like to try the building monitor. If it, if it doesn't work out, if we struggle, if we find that it's a deterrent towards people who would rather pay three times the amount and book the Chaska Event Center, because there isn't that requirement there or they feel that it's less obtrusive. Um, I, I just want to try out the building monitor policy. So...
Keep in mind that the only time that a building monitor is going to be on there is when alcohol's being served.
Yeah.
And we're not going by the technical of being served, that someone is, it's a fee, it's a pay. Where this is if alcohol is in the building.
Correct.
It doesn't matter if it's being sold or it's being just...
Right.
It's being served.
Period. There's alcohol, there's different definitions.
So...
I'm supportive of this as is. I'm okay with adjusting the hourly rate of the building monitor. Making sure that we have a clear instructions on how to train a building monitor, right? Whatever that program entails and whatever certification that is. And incorporating that for those groups who frequently meet, if they want to or if they want to send somebody to be trained, I'm okay with that.
Can I have a little more explanation on the building monitor, when, like, who this might be? How, because at once we said city employees, then we said, what's our vision for that?
Yeah, I'll let Brent answer.
It'd be, uh, similar to like an ice rink attendant, I'm imagining. So, uh, eight, you know, 18 years old, but, you know, whether it's a senior, whether by high school or by senior citizen or whatever, somebody that would... When I think of it, I think of, uh, going into really any district building, whether it's a basketball practice or volleyball, they usually have someone sitting at a little desk by the door. Um, and they're just there to help out. Or if, you know, namely when I'm there, they're yelling at kids because they're dribbling basketballs in the hallway. But it's, it'd be somebody like, so that, so we, you know, seek out app, application. So they'd be a city employee. Um, we'd want it, we'd do a background check, drug test. Um, and then it would be, I'd probably work with Vicky and probably Brian to, we'd develop kind of a checklist of things we'd want them to do, things they, we want them to look for. Um, you know, check the bathrooms, make sure there's toilet paper in there or what have you. Um, that kind of thing. Um, we'd have, we'd have to develop kind of a list. We haven't developed that kind of detail because we wanted to see if the council was interested in having this function. So we haven't developed kind of the work plan. But it would be similar to kind of, they're there. Who, I, I, I'm not 100% certain, but I'm 95% certain that our camera capability is something that we can access online. So it is something that we could look at, but it, I, I would probably advocate for that person to be around so that when they were seen, it didn't seem like mom or dad was home and going to check in quick. It was like them almost serving as a host, you know, and where they're like, is everything going okay? You know, if they have problems with the AV system, our person's trained to help them through that. So I think if we, frankly, even if we changed the, the title of this to host, so we're going to require a host, the city provided host, so that it's not, not being monitored. It's, we're hosting you here and, um, it's just as much for kind of being there for them as it is to put, to make sure like the alcohol piece is within boundaries. And I think that's the, the part that I struggle with when looking at this. There's obviously situations where you're not as concerned and situations where you may be, it's just hard to find the sweet spot of what that should look like and where that should be. So I appreciate the conversation the council's having with that. So, um, I mean, based on what I'm hearing tonight, if the council would pursue this, you know, I'd probably work with Vicky and advocate that we just change, one, just change the title of it, because building host sounds a little bit more, um, welcoming than building monitor.
So it's, it's making me think, let's say somebody, some business organization rents the facility for a full day or maybe multiple days, like they're going to have a subsequent, you know, meetings throughout a couple of days. If I were that renter, I would want to hire that person to be on-site just to help make sure my meeting goes smoothly, helps with any issues we run into in the facility. I mean, I know there's training for those who are renting it to kind of understand, you know, how the AV system works, all the issues or whatever. But would there be an opportunity to hire that even though alcohol wasn't being served?
Yeah, I think you could provide that as, I mean, we, the idea would be to have a list of a dozen or so people that, you know, we'd, if they could, it would be required based on what you have now for alcohol, but they could certainly request somebody.
Right. If you wanted to request somebody to kind of be on-site just for any issues or assistance or just help in making sure the facility is good for the duration of the meeting or rental.
You know, I think you're just thinking about like, you know, from time to time, well, you know, one of the things that we probably want to do is ensure, especially if alcohol is involved, make sure that the building monitor, make sure that the garbages were out. Because I won't want to put anybody on our team in a position where they're holding a staff meeting the next day, let's say in the village hall and their beer cans in the garbage. It's, it's a subtle, subtlety piece, it's not a huge deal, I'm not...
You don't want us to think you're all drinking on the job?
Right.
We want to think, thinking about after the job.
But it's just those little subtleties that, you know, um, but I think it's a cha- it's a challenging conversation in light of how the previous village hall was used and what we're used to. So I, you know, I understand.
What was the building monitor per hour charge?
We talked about initially 25, but when Vicky and I had talked about it, down to 15.
Okay, that sounds more palatable to me.
And if you have your own volunteers, part of your organization, right? Are we still thinking about that?
They have, still have, they couldn't provide their own. They basically have to apply to be a building monitor, be an employee of the city.
Right.
So they could get paid.
Does that negate the charge?
If that person chose to volunteer their time, so...
But they could get paid too then? So somebody from your organization could choose to apply?
We could have a, we could have a group of paid staff, but we could also have a group of non-paid volunteers. And still, they'd still have to meet all the criteria. They're just choosing to forego their pay.
So realistically...
We could also use people like that to help cut lawn.
So basically, we could get...
I'd volunteer for that. Let's talk.
Let's just, we get six Lions that want to come down and learn how to be a building monitor. Can they sign up for that? What's that?
A CCY BSA parent, yeah.
And can they come down there and fill out the forms, get trained? So that way, in case they have a meeting where one of six people aren't going to, one of six will finally be there, can we cover that too, so that, that will be a non-paid, uh, monitor too?
When you say non-paid, are you saying that they wouldn't pay the fee?
No.
Like the person who is having the building monitor would not be paying the fee if that person was a volunteer, I think?
I was mistaken. They would still have to pay the fee, but that person could donate it back, whatever.
We were talking about that, that the person would still be treated like an employee. They'd have to go through, they'd have to meet all the criteria, go through, like Brent had mentioned, the background check and so forth and the training. And then I think we would set up some kind of a program if they wanted to get paid and then turn around and donate that money back. They certainly could do that. We would, you know, make sure that that was covered within our, I'll call it our building host plan.
Thank you.
Yes.
The only other thing that I wanted to say is, you know, we talked a lot about consistency. In the policy that you read, we struggled with something that was consistent across the board. Because my nightmare is quinceañeras, yes, you need to have a building monitor. You know, pancake feed for the, you know, Lions, nope, you don't need to have a host, you know? So something that's consistent. Um, and I think with this policy, and I think with the flexibility to be able to have a volunteer from your organization, a parent, a lion, um, I think that that gives us this. And this too, I think, is a process. We could get six months into it and decide that we need to rethink this based on, you know, the feedback we get.
Let's just keep in mind that it's all when alcohol is being served, that that's good. So if there's no alcohol, it just goes away. So, that's kind of where I'm at with it. Organizations can choose to have or not to have. Um, if they do, these are, uh, these are the stipulations that are for when alcohol is. Plain and simple, it's, it's not that other rental facilities don't have that, because they do. I try renting the, uh, the county dance hall out in Laconia. They charge 150 bucks per hour for their, for their security.
That should be a secu- insecurity.
Oh, yeah. That was just, I mean, that's, it was going to cost another, what was it, 900 bucks for a security guard? And I was like, wow, we've got 30 people that have carry concealed, but, no.
Okay, I think we're at a point where...
It has to be one of, it has to be one of our security guards.
I think we're at a point where we can move on. Vicky, do you have what you need from us? Are we...
Yes, I think we've covered all the questions. I just want to make sure that if anybody had any other questions, otherwise I think I have what I need.
So the one question that I, I don't know if I'm getting ahead of us, but going into the policy portion, that's okay. Um, I may have missed it, but I struggled to find the part in here that said, the person who makes, who makes the reservation must attend the event that the rental is for.
Yes, it's, it indicates that they or somebody that they designate needs to be in attendance during the event.
Um, I have a question about that, and this is a scar from long ago. Um, we would, it is, we had a certain person here in Carver who would rent the facility for out-of-town, um, parties.
Oh, nice.
And so for, we'll say that, non-resident, um, parties. And then would come in and tell me that they were renting it. And of course, they were going to be there. And then they wouldn't be there. So, I really like the strong language, but when we talk about the designee, I, is that the entire term? I'm not quite sure what page we're looking at here for that, but...
So if it's a, maybe we state that if it's a resident renting or an organization that's renting, it has, the designation has to be of similar standing? I don't know, part of that same organization or a resident? I don't know.
I, I don't know, but I, like I said, it happens, it happened. Um, I, I think we should be a little bit careful on that one.
Yeah, and I appreciate that comment. And it is under 1 dot 9 event supervision, where they do need to have somebody available. And that's certainly something we can go over when they're filling out their application form. Make sure, you know, first of all, what group are they falling in? If they're a non-resident and so forth. And then find out, either they're going to be there or they need to have their designated person that's going to be there. I think that's something that we can manage when we use the application form.
And if the designee is a non-resident, then that means your rate gets bumped up to the non-resident rate, right?
Well, if it's whoever's, whoever the rental party is, who is renting it and is that person going to be there? And then if they say, no, it's someone else, then I think we need to have a conversation about who is the person who's really renting the facility, so we don't run into somebody renting it for somebody else.
Okay. Feels great to me, I'm just saying. So let's maybe look to say, well, this is my designee. And I think we need to know if that designee is a resident or a non-resident. If you're going to designate it, we must know who...
Who it is.
Who it is.
In detail.
Thank you.
Cool.
Okay, any other questions?
I don't have anything.
So the next step then would be to bring this back to the city council for consideration and future adoption at the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Vicky.
Thank you, Vicky.
Um, moving on to agenda item number three, the street sign proposal, Mr. Skok.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, if you remember back during strategic planning, we talked about uniformed street signs and putting something together that kind of signifies you're in Carver. So doing something either with a logo on the current street signs, doing something above it. So, um, part of my job was to kind of dig into that a little bit, come up with a couple of options and come back and present them. Um, so one of the options, uh, we call this option A, is really just taking and putting our logo right on the street sign on this, uh, to the left side of her, the beginning. Um, it would inquire all the street signs to be remade, um, so the signs would get a little bit longer. So in making them longer and putting that on there, it's about a $5 cost per street sign. So, um, moving forward for our developers, we're looking at additional $5 per street sign to do that. Um, for us to upgrade the rest of our signs, kind of looking at all of our signs with all of our intersections, we're looking in the neighborhood about $25,000 to get that, that process taken care of. Now, again, that's not something that we would maybe hit right away. It'd be something we'd do over time, but I just wanted to be able to give, uh, you, the council, that, that number, kind of where that's at.
Quick question. So would this only apply to public streets? Do we have any private streets?
We do have a few private streets and that'd be something we'd want to discuss how we wanted to do that. And it might be a great way to signify that is a private street. Right now, they're currently brown. But, um, the signs are brown when they're non, or in their private streets. And maybe we wouldn't put our logo on those as well, but that's definitely something to talk about.
Okay.
Um, option B then would be to add a street sign or add a sign above it. Similar to, like we have in historic district, um, we have that sign above it. So we do something similar, we could use a lot of our existing street signs, but it does require some additional brackets and the sign itself. So those are about $17 per sign or per setup that would cost. So again, the new developments, the developers, that'd be $17 per intersection, we'd look at that. For us, if we're looking at redoing them all, we'd add those to the top and we're just over $33,000. That would cost us to kind of redo our intersections for that. So those are the two options we did come up with, and I would be happy to answer any questions or if you had any other ideas or suggestions.
Question. On option B, what are the chances, um, they could like trim the corners to make it city of Carver with the street sign there with having, you know, not the whites or anything else there?
Sure, yeah, we can do anything we want, as long as it stays in one side. If we get into a little bit more, um, unique designs or shapes, that's when the cost obviously goes up. So, but it is definitely something we can look at, trying to do that differently.
Even a simple, just a knock-down square, just to kind of rectangle those off would make it pop a little bit more?
Sure, yep, definitely.
Are you saying, I'm sorry, one piece of metal or you just want, just making it square instead of consistent with the curve?
Cutting these out, like so.
Oh, maybe like diagonal down to the sign?
So this will stand out, it'll pop by itself. That was the feedback I got, and they liked the more expensive one. I was like, it's going to cost a little bit more. Well, if we're going to do it, let's do it right.
On option A, do you think that the logo's even going to be that visible? I mean, is it going to be, just look like a tiny little blob on there?
Um, surprisingly...
It's my technical term, by the way.
Yeah, and it, and it does blend to some extent, um, with our, with our logo, though it does help with the water tower a little bit. Um, the signs, you gotta remember, are a little bit bigger, so I think the lettering were right around that eight-inch sign. Um, you'll see this if you start looking at other communities, they do kind of put that in there. Um, try to do some color with it, but with our green water tower, it really kind of makes it challenging to kind of get a little bit of extra color in there, in raising the cost. But it is something we kind of played with back and forth on how to make that look and maybe pop a little bit more.
If we take the word "city of" off and just have Carver to get a little bit less of that kind of muddled on top of it, do you think that would make it pop a little bit more?
It's definitely something we can, we can look at doing, we can take that out of there and...
I mean, if it says Carver, people are like, I don't know, are you going to realize you're in Carver? It says Carver. Yeah, true, that's true.
That's our brand and...
Yes, exactly.
Okay, it was just a thought.
Yeah. I wonder, I guess I hadn't thought about the historic district signs that we add on. Would it be possible to incorporate that into option A? So that we could add another, something maybe underneath that city of Carver logo that says historic district or something like that for those historic district streets?
Yep. Now, the nice thing about this and the company that we work with, they can add, we can do anything we want there. But it starts getting smaller and it...
Right, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know? Are you saying to put historic, the word historic there?
Or historic district, because what we're saying is today, we have kind of option B with historic district, right? On top of the signs. So let's say we were going to go option A, we're going to replace all the signs in the city. Could we instead for those historic district street signs incorporate city of Carver historic district just right in the sign and not have the thing on top?
I will say, I like the thing, I like the thing on top, yeah. And when you go to a lot of towns with historic districts, you'll see that cap on there, so you kind of recognize when you see it, oh, that means it's historic. So I guess I prefer that.
I just was like throwing it out there just to see if that was something that.
A little brainstorming here.
Yeah. So I, I think of the two, my preference is option B. I do have the same concerns, I think it was you, that the city of Carver gets missed in that other one. And twenty-five thousand dollars is a lot to put it on something that people might not see. I also think that thirty-three thousand dollars is a lot. And I would question if this is the best investment of what we should be doing with our taxpayer money at this point. I get the branding. You know, it also really locks us into this logo and word mark, which is to say, I don't know that it's going anywhere. I like it and it's served the city just fine for the last more than handful of years, I think. But with everything we've got coming along, I know that thirty-three thousand dollars isn't much in the scope of a fire truck or a well. But.
But all the little thirty-three thousand dollars add up together.
Seems, yeah, like, you know, this is not the time.
Well, is there staggered, we can do so many a year?
Yeah, so one, one thing to point out is that's going out and just you guys pulling the pin and we go do it. Now, as part of our, we have a sign replacement program. We have to replace our signs as they start to fade and wear. The reflect, reflectability is gone, so we do replace them over time. So I really wanted to just give you the number that if we went at it, this is what it was gonna cost. Now, really at the end of the day, if we do it as part of our normal maintenance, as we go forward, we replace them, we're gonna add the logo or put a sign on top. Then we can just start adding that cost to our replacement program.
Seventeen more dollars per.
Then you're really looking at that extra five dollars on the one or seven.
What can you do for three hundred dollars a year, Brian?
Well, sixty a sign.
Divided by seventeen. So is, so is the regular street sign replacement an annual maintenance activity or?
It's an annual, we do a certain portion of them, so you'll see street signs that are faded, they don't reflect as well. Some of the older ones down, downtown here, I shouldn't say, more middle Carver. You'll see that they're a little bit smaller, lettering and stuff, so we're really trying to get it back, emergency vehicle stuff, so we start replacing those.
How many would you say you'd do a year and how long would it take us to go?
We don't do as many street signs as we do stop signs and no, you know, those signs.
Yeah.
So the street signs, it'd take us, it would take us years. It's not something, it'd be, it'd be fifteen, twenty years by the time we're done with the program. But at least we'd have something in play if that's something you guys so choose.
Sure. I also, just to, sorry. You know, kind of thinking about this piece and when we were talking about it. And now since we've sat through the JCP corridor study and the opportunity that we're gonna get for branding along that corridor, maybe we consider these kinds of costs and this kind of thing in that scope as well because I think there's going to be some branding of the city of Carver within that whole corridor as well from a cost perspective.
Do we look at, and this is again, we're just sort of brainstorming here. If we, can you flip to option B? What if we did this more at entrances to different, rather than doing every single sign, we did them to, as you sort of entered maybe off of a collector into different ones? So it, we don't see it on every, but you, highly traveled roads, you'll, you'll be more likely to turn and see them. And when you ha, as you get further into the developments, it just goes down to the plain green?
Consistency.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. Because I can see, you know, going up Fourth Street and you're going up and those corners, you see all these on, you know, if you're not from Carver, you're picking those out as you go. But once you get back to the back circle. Is it, is it as necessary?
Is it as impactful?
Yeah, impactful, thank you.
I think if we were to move forward with this, and again, not sure it's the best use of money, but I would probably prefer to do it as a as-needed basis on the replacement signs and then for the new developments. Agreed.
How many signs do we have in town?
I think I calculated, we're right at existing street signs, about a hundred and twenty-five.
A hundred and twenty-five?
No, some of those we did double up on some intersections that we're changing, so we did put them on kitty quarter, opposite intersections. We have the same street sign, so some of those will consolidate, so I'll move right around that one twenty-five.
So if we do ten a year, that's thirty-three hundred bucks a year.
Which is above how much? We would have normally, let's say we did that many a year, what were we, what was the?
So then we'd get them all replaced in like ten years?
Yeah, about ten years, so and typically, I don't remember, we have a line item budget for sign replacement that we use. I don't remember if that's five or ten thousand dollars somewhere and there's our budget item. We use it for like all of them, but we can reallocate some of that for some of those up.
How much was it for the ones we have now, per sign?
Well, we are at. Current sign cost typically is about eighteen ninety-five per sign. But that would be, so the, the option A one, so this here is a standalone seventeen dollars for the top sign. So this one here, we're looking at about nineteen dollars for that sign.
With the logo?
No, logo, then you add the additional five dollars on it.
Okay, thanks.
And then could we require any new development, any new signs that go up have this? So in addition to, let's say we choose option B, if we like that one the most, we could require that for any new development, new roads that go in? And we can say if we're gonna replace, we also do option B and just kind of pay as we go?
I would be happier with that. I, I don't want to look at spending thirty thousand dollars.
I know, but there's gonna be a lot of new roads going in, right? How many signs did you say we have?
About a hundred and twenty-five intersection signs, now remember you got opposite corners and stuff, so.
Okay, so even two fifty, if it's double that number, times seventeen is way less than thirty-three thousand.
Some of those, the piping on them are round pipes, so we have to upgrade the pole and so there's some other pieces that go along with it. And I can give you the complete breakout, but the complete breakout, there's pole, staff time, you know, some other pieces to that that go into that, so.
I like option B. And if we do it piecemeal or just pay as we go.
As we go and have any new.
Replacement signs and.
This be our new sign going forward and then replace with the new sign as we do maintenance.
And I kind of like option A, but I don't know what that, how that logo will look because I don't have a physical one to look at, like a real one in my hand. If it looks like it fades away, I mean, what do you think it's gonna be? Like, how many inches do you think that logo might be?
That's it, I could actually have a couple made up, you know, and just, I could bring them back in another work session and.
See it being four? Not big enough to be able to read. My vote is no.
No, completely?
Okay. I think it's lovely, I think it's also. A want.
So I'm sorry, tell me again exactly how much you think we would spend maybe per year if we were to not do the whole system just as we had to replace, like, or the new developments? So how many do you think will be going in this year, if you had to guess?
Actual street signs that we'll do outside of development, we'd probably do two or three intersections per year.
For new development?
For new development.
It's not a.
Intersectionalized, we're probably one, two.
Do developers pay for that?
Yeah.
Okay, so the developers are paying for that part, so we would be replacing maybe.
Well, some of the existing now, if we add a sign on top of that cost, we may have to incur that one. If we had a logo on it, if they're not made, we might be able to get them to do that one. But that would be something we'd have to discuss with the developer.
And as a caveat, any project that we've approved didn't have this information, so it'd be projects moving forward now.
Well, that is food for thought, Brian.
I think this is good information to have because we have talked about branding, we've talked about city identification. I think we're gonna have more opportunities to talk about this.
Do we have interest in seeing them in real life, having? Having some.
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
Can you do that and get some sample pieces for us?
Yeah, I'll, I'll put, I'll get a couple of mock ones, set, mock set up and then we'll, we'll look at them and it still don't have to do anything, but it's something at least we can bring back.
Right.
Later on, if you guys so choose and we can talk about it again in a year or whatever, if it's something that. Had to push down the road.
Thank you. Have what you need from us, Brian?
Yep.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Right, good. Moving on to the city manager's report.
There's nothing I have that is urgent, so I'll just save my report. To the regular meeting since we're already at seven.
Okay, should we just adjourn and then we can do council requests during council communications?
Sure.
Okay.
Make motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. We've got a motion by council member Henry and a second by council member McKnight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.